Good morning. Thank you for coming to the State of Connecticut Department of Housing Public Hearing on the Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan, or Home ARP Allocation Plan. This plan was crafted with a significant amount of public input, and this draft is out for public comment, both in writing and at this public hearing. If you have written comments that you would like to submit, either before, during, or after this event, please send them to ct.housing-plans@ct.gov. My name is Michael Santoro. I'm the Director of Policy Research and Housing Support at the State of Connecticut Department of Housing. And my partner in crime, Laura Watson, worked extensively to create this draft plan. As I indicated, a significant amount of public input was sought before the plan was drafted. And again, we are taking public comment, both today and in writing. This is a public meeting, so you will have the opportunity to comment on the plan. If you have questions, I would ask that you hold those questions until after people who have public comment have had the opportunity to make those comments. But we will try to do, answer any questions that you might have after the public comment, period. With the number of people in the room, I don't know how many are going to speak. So for right now, we're going to limit comments to five minutes. Okay? If we get through everybody and then there's additional time, obviously, we'll give you the opportunity to make additional input. Okay? All that being said, I'm going to ask, if you want to speak, please raise your hand. Laura will take note on who wants to speak. I think Teams now has the functionality where it tells you order. I don't know how it works, but I believe that functionality exists. If you have comment and you want to speak on the record, please use the "Raise Your Hand" function and raise your hand. So based on that, everybody's here just to listen, and nobody is here to comment. Oh, I have one. No, I don't have any. If you have a question that you want to ask... Oh, and so I see a question in the chat. So I'll read it, and I will respond. So will you be reviewing the plan here? This is from Letitia Cologne de Mejas, the Chair of the Latino and Public PR Affairs for CWC SOE State of Connecticut, and Policy Co-Chair for Building Performance Association of the USA NEJAC, federally appointed member. Boy, Letitia, that's a mouthful. We were not. The plan, it was not intended to go over the plan. This is really a public opportunity to comment. Again, I can do a quick and dirty, if you'd like. But we'll do that after anybody who has commented, has had the opportunity to do so. Actually, we have one. Questions? We will get to questions in a minute. No, no problem.
No way. No way.
Mr. Rich, you have a comment, please.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mike. And thank you for, it was you who put together this draft. I thought it was very, very well worded, concise, and thoughtful. And thank you for really justifying so much of what you did with the data that you had in there. So I thought that was a... I looked at that in my first pass on and said, "This is great. Let's move on." But I do have one real, real concern on this. And it could just be my baggage over the years, but... And just suspicions of... As you know, we have worked hard, and I don't want to underestimate how much work we've done to target resources to those that are most in need, most vulnerable. That's how our system works. There's limited resources, and we give the best and most viable resources to those that are most vulnerable. And you know the system before that, that it was first come, first served, and we got nowhere. So the only way we do this is by... And people don't like that, because they say there are all these other folks with needs, and why aren't they prioritized? Believe me, we've worked together as a nation on this. And in Connecticut, we're in the forefront of really... And this is what we do as a system, and that's why we've succeeded. So anytime I hear, I see, I smell a whiff of a side door, I get really, really nervous. And I know you're in the rules here in every which way, but you're not prioritizing populations. You made it very clear in this, you're not prioritizing those that are truly homeless. And for us in the homeless system, that smells, reeks. And it just allows for the side door and developers to come in, and you've known they've done this for years, and saying, "Oh, everyone here is sort of at risk of homelessness." And we'll just certify that they're at risk of homelessness. And it opens really a barn door for everyone. And so I'm really concerned on this. When you keep emphasizing in here, there's no prioritization, that it's just going to allow any developer to come in and say, "Well, we work with those that are vulnerable, so they're at risk." So I just want from you, how you can give us the promises that we know this money was focused on the homeless, you know how this homeless system works, that we prioritize. And believe me, it's been a fight, and it continues to be a fight on this. But with limited resources, we just don't... And this is the very best resource we have for the homeless, bar none, is this. This is the pinnacle of what we can provide. And we don't have enough of this for everyone. But we do know that those that are severely mentally ill, that have been on the streets for a long time, that really struggle, that need this. Not that everyone doesn't need this, but some need it far more than others if we're truly going to be able to end homelessness. So that's, I know I'm long-winded there, but just your sort of commitments, guarantees, put my fears to rest.
And thank you for your comments, David. And I think I can do that actually very quickly, very easily, without taking much time from anybody. When we talk about not prioritizing within the eligible population groups, all referrals for funds coming through Home ARP will be made through the Coordinated Access Networks. Okay? So those who are most vulnerable through the existing Coordinated Access Network will in fact be served. What we didn't want to do was to limit it and say, "Only the homeless." Because there are those who come through the Coordinated Access Network who are in fact at risk. We don't want to exclude those. There are others who have an instance of domestic violence. And if we have the opportunity to deal with that individual with these programs or with this assistance, we want to be able to do that. This is not an open door for developers to say, "Oh, I serve at risk." Not in any way, shape, or form. I hope that alleviates your concern.
Thank you.
No problem. Do we, we have another hand? Kim Ploge. Kim, please introduce yourself, and then feel free.
Yep. So I'll keep mine really quick. So I'm Kim Ploge, and I work with the Department of Public Health. I supervise our childhood lead poisoning prevention program. I think, you know, whatever you guys have, the money is earmarked for. Whatever, the Department of Public Health can help to support as far as just making any connections, you know, especially if it involves any concerns with making sure that housing is environmentally safe and, you know, any like direction with local health directors and stuff that we can connect people with. We would, you know, always appreciate that. So just keep us in mind for stuff like that that's applicable to us.
Thank you, Kim. We appreciate the partnership that we had with the Department of Public Health over basically my, the majority of my career. We've done really good stuff. We've got really good stuff coming down the pike. And I think our continued cooperation, collaboration will be extremely helpful as we go forward. So thank you for your comments. Mr. Dunn, please introduce yourself, and feel free.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Yeah, I'm John Dunn. I'm a Senior Community Investment Officer for the Corporation for Supportive Housing. And so, yeah, thanks. The plan looks really good. The devil's in the details, so I'm going to ask a little bit about the details. You know, as you know, when we think of serving the homeless, we think of supportive housing, which is affordable housing that has services, and it has rents either subsidized or low enough for people coming out of homelessness. So out of this 30-odd million dollars, do you expect that some of that is going to be available for services in housing and/or for operating subsidies in housing? Or is the majority of it going to be used? Well, how much of it would be used for capital sources? And I'm expecting, you know, for bricks and mortar. And I'm anticipating, I'm thinking that the state already has resources for capital for affordable housing and is, you know, running out of resources for services and operations. So have you guys given much thought to that? And what, and maybe you could tell us, you know, what you expect to do?
So again, as I indicated, I'll try to answer some questions after. Does anybody simply have comments about the plan before we try to take on questions? Letitia? And John, we'll get to your questions later on. Letitia, you're up. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. Just Letitia Colón de Mejías. I'm the Chair of Latino and Puerto Rican Affairs for the State of Connecticut's Commission on Equity Opportunity for Women, Children, Senior, and Elderly Folks. Or say, everybody really, unless you're a white man between the ages of 25 and 50. So that said, I think it's critical that the plan at least have a general overview for the public, because it's very difficult for public to meaningfully engage and comment without any overview. Something very short and simple would work for me. Other than that, I would just like to say that as a person on the Commission for Equity Opportunity, as a building scientist, as a climate expert, as a Latina in our community, and as a person on the Equity Commission for Minority Initiative Boards and Economic Development, that homelessness is on the rise in our state. And in a pandemic, it's most difficult, but it's always been a problem. One can't get ahead without a roof or a bed. So I do think it's critical that this plan be reviewed under the lens of equity, specifically in the creation of safe, affordable, efficient housing. Because the other thing that's on the rise is the inability to pay people's electric and heating costs, even in affordable housing situations such as Section 8 or HUD vouchers. So I would like to put that on the table. And then I'm most interested in just a general overview of the plan so that the rest of my commentary makes sense to the public that might be on. Thank you so much.
Sure. And Letitia, we have a very short PowerPoint presentation that I can run through after we get through any initial comments. Okay? And then if there's additional comments after that, we can come back to it. Sharon, again, please introduce yourself.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Sharon Castelli. I'm the CEO of Chrisless Center Real Estate Corporation and the CEO of Chrisless Center Housing Development Corporation. So I walk on both sides of housing, of working in supportive housing with homeless individuals that need supportive housing, as well as developing housing. And so I've had the opportunity to read through the report and want to just thank those that crafted this. I think there is a really nice balance in there of 25 million for new housing development, 5 million for non-congregate shelter, and I believe there's another 5 million administrative fees. So the only comment that I did have is that as somebody who's been doing the work on both sides of the aisle of housing and support services, where we've run into issues is around the services and the subsidies. I say that because I've been involved with some new housing development where we've been asked to come on as the social service provider, and we've really had to struggle to find both the services and the subsidies. And so I love the idea that, Michael, you spoke about that people are going to continue to come through the CAN. The shelter folks will continue to come through the CAN so that we are targeting the most vulnerable. But I do think John Dunn has a great point in that if the services and subsidies are not available within this plan, we just need to figure out a way to leverage that, because the nonprofits, we just don't have the resources anymore to be able to provide support for free. So that's my only comment. But I, again, kudos to those that crafted this plan. I think it feels, at least with my initial read of it, that it's a nice balance between non-congregate shelter dollars, 5 million, and then again, 25 million for the new housing development. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate the comments, and well taken. Any other comments? Okay, so I'm going to take a shot, share my screen, run through a very quick PowerPoint presentation of what the Home ARP program is. As I go through that, I'll talk a little bit about where our priority for this program, these program funds are. So give me a second. Okay. Can everybody see the slideshow? Give me a yes and a no.
Yes.
Okay. Now let's see if it'll run. So Home ARP was part of the American Rescue Act, Section 3205 of the American Rescue Plan Act. And it is specifically to address creating affordable housing for homeless and at-risk homeless families. We got, we are getting $35,939,963. A total of 15% is available for planning and admin, and up to 5% is available right now. We are not using any of the upfront planning cost money. The plan requirements, as you can see in our plan, our needs assessment, gap analysis, eligible activities, production goals, population preferences, and Home ARP refinancing guidelines, those are all addressed in our plan. This talks about what we had to go through in terms of identifying what our need is, based on statistics, based on the numbers. The eligible activities are very limited under Home ARP. Acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter, development and support of affordable housing, the provision of supportive services, and TBRA or tenant-based rental assistance. Also, within those rules, 100% of the Home ARP funds used for TBRA or supportive services or acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter must benefit individuals and families in qualifying populations. What that means is all of the home money has to directly service or serve qualifying populations. Also, not less than 70% of the affordable housing units acquired, rehabbed, or constructed must be occupied by households in the qualifying populations. For those of you who don't understand housing development, very often, a project or a development includes both affordable and non-affordable units or affordable units in different targeted income population groups. For this program, 70% of the Home ARP funds must go to units that are occupied by homeless, at-risk of homeless, or the other qualifying populations allowed under the program. And I'm going to go to those right now. I'm going to skip a little. These are the qualifying populations. That is, these funds can only serve these populations. Homeless, at-risk of homeless, as defined under 24 CFR 91.5. Those fleeing, attempting to flee, domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. Other populations where providing supportive services or assistance would prevent homelessness. And finally, veterans and families that include a veteran. 100% of non-congregate shelter supportive services or TBRA has to serve one of these populations. And 70% of the units we assist have to serve one of these populations. Okay? As far as our little run-through, I think that's it. So let me stop. And I'll tell you about our plan very quickly. So, and if I can get this closed, I'll call the plan back up, and I will share it. Okay, so this is our actual draft plan. Let me blow it up a little so you can see it. This is available at the department's website. It was also distributed as part of the link. Okay? As we talked about, we're getting just under $36 million. Our planned activities are creating, the creation of affordable housing opportunities for qualified populations and creating non-congregate shelter opportunities. We will also consider other eligible activities, which, as you noted a moment ago, can include social service and TBRA. Okay? Tenant-based rental assistance. We are not prioritizing any of those sub-population groups. As David asked, and as I reiterated, these funds can only serve one of these population groups, and we intend to have all of those referrals come through our Coordinated Access Network. That way, we do in fact prioritize the neediest or the most vulnerable. With regard to social services and TBRA, we do not call them out as targeted activities. They are not excluded. But our clear priority, based on the needs gap analysis, based on the data that we have collected, based on everything that we have seen, the biggest problem we have today is the volume of housing stock or a lack thereof. There are just not enough units, housing opportunities, out there, period. If we can get a unit created for a homeless family or an at-risk homeless family that was not there before, that solves a multitude of problems across the spectrum. We understand the value of social services. We are looking at identifying other resources to help our social service community. We have specifically made asks in that regard. From, at this point, I can just say, other resources. As those become identified and available, we intend to make that information available. Letitia, that's the long and short of our plan. I hope that helps. If you have additional comments, we'd be happy to hear them. I'm going to stop sharing. And you still have time. So if you haven't had a chance to read through our plan, or you want to take some time to think about comments, you can submit written comments through midnight tomorrow, being February the 4th. Am I correct, Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Those written comments, the web address is in the chat box. But again, ct.housing-plans@ct.gov. We will take written comment again through midnight. All written comments received will be included with our submission to HUD. In addition, the comments will be summarized, and if appropriate, responses will be included in that plan submitted to HUD. So please, take the time, even if it's just an email. We would love your comments.
Hey, Bobby.
How you doing, Emma?
One second. We have...
It depends on what you have to tell me.
Got it. We would love to get your comments, whether they are in support of or adverse to, if you disagree with our plan or our intended targets. Okay? Letitia, you're up. Again, would you reintroduce yourself real quick, and then feel free?
Fair enough. Thank you so much. So, great. Thank you for reviewing the plan. I think that was very helpful, at least for my purposes, it was. My loose comments are here in the chat, and I will make an effort to submit them also as an email. But ultimately, I am echoing some of the other commenters here today. That wraparound services like mental health support, food justice, workforce development programs, resilience, budgeting, and life skills are all needed for folks coming through the CAN program or folks who just simply need safe, affordable shelter and housing in the state of Connecticut. Over 400,000 households in our state cannot afford their energy bills, leaving them to often live in very disparaged situations. And in addition to that, there is an undocumented homeless population in Connecticut, which honestly, in my opinion, goes undervalued and underserved. Many of these people are impacted by mental health concerns that they don't connect with proper health insurance or mental health supports. Therefore, it would be an opportune time now to consider that as you move forward in your proposal. Specifically, the commission that I sit on in our policy platform this year is asking for safe, affordable, efficient housing with services that allow people to have a hand up instead of a handout. Some of these things are the things I mentioned, like workforce training and resilience planning and mental health services, which will allow us to stabilize our families and households and get on our own feet to not necessarily need a subsidized housing situation forever. We find that those type of planning programs don't exist in Connecticut. That would allow us to stay in housing whilst we get on our feet, but not give us a cliff, so that then we could save money and eventually buy a house and have homeownership in Connecticut, which currently has at a low rate of about 2% for people of color. Additionally, we feel that it would be important to ensure that there are building codes which make it appropriate to not build in flood zones, which have changed because of climate change, that there be proper thermal boundaries inclusive in the projects, which would lower energy burdens, energy emissions, and energy costs, which is also a state goal at deep and in our state resiliency plan. This would help people shelter in place during storms and situations where we lose power or in a pandemic, for example, which really impacted many families, forcing them to stay at home with seven to 10 people in a one-bedroom apartment, for example. Also, when people lose power, having resilient shelter means that they could shelter in place for that as well, with their children or elderly. This would include solutions such as onsite solar generation, battery storage for backup. And there is a program at the Green Bank, which I think y'all should leverage and connect with. They have additional fundings. There will also be funding coming from the Build Back Better Infrastructure Federal Dollars, and this could also be leveraged through your program, because there's a specific focus on vulnerable populations and affordable housing, and it relates to your work. And then the last thing I want to bring up is during the pandemic, we saw a real increase in problematic issues or disparity gaps in communities of color and low-income populations and vulnerable populations.
I blocked on for this seminar.
One of the things that would, someone's talking, but that's okay. One of the things that would really help those communities would be having play areas that are built in these housing communities. Whoever's talking, can you meet yourself? Thanks.
Letitia, somebody muted you. You're still on mute.
Thank you. Areas that could be outside, that would be shaded and have trees to help environmental justice communities. The trees not only absorb pollution, give out oxygen, reduce carbon, they provide shade for children to play in, which was another problem in the pandemic as parks were closed. Children had no place to go in inner-city communities and at-risk populations. You could have onsite food production areas, even if they're small and not to feed the whole place, but it would, again, help in times of crisis. It also teaches life skills. And so these are things that may sound like luxuries, but in reality, they're not. These things have become necessity for life, especially as we have become more socially distant, as energy costs have risen, and as our climate impacts have become more and more visible in at-risk, vulnerable communities, inner-city areas, and communities of color. So thank you for the time to provide comments and for your engagement. If somebody on your team could potentially grab my comments from the chat, I'd be thrilled. If not, I will try to follow up, and I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Letitia. And we should be able to just copy and paste them out of the chat. So thank you very much. We appreciate and value your input and your comments. Mr. Rich, you are up, sir.
Thanks, thanks, Mike.
Again, please reintroduce yourself.
Yeah. Yeah, David Rich, the CEO of the Housing Collective. I'm going to take a contrarian view to my colleagues this morning. Mike, I absolutely agree with you. The data shows the need is housing. We need that more than anything else. And so I totally, fully support that the lion's share, if not all, this money goes into bricks and mortar so that we can build more deeply affordable homeless for housing for the homeless. uh, a housing, uh, housing for the homeless. Um, uh, DOH, and I think a big mistake is everyone looks at you as the poverty agency. I, I think if you're a small agency here, it's a wrong, it's boneheaded, it does not help us all by saying that you're gonna solve homelessness on your own and solve all these problems. We need these other agencies to step in, and I think we all collectively have to push back that, um, yes, you provide the housing, we have to have other agencies provide the services and, um, and, and long-term subsidies. Also, it makes no tactical sense. This money is short-term. If you put money into rental subsidies and social services, it's only gonna be for two, three, four years, and then there's gonna be crying about, okay, how do we continue with that funding going, going on? It's incumbent on us as a system and a homeless system, and from our side here and who I work with, guaranteed, it's up to us to figure this out, to work with other agencies, work with housing authorities, um, and our system, the COCs, to bring in the, the subsidies and the services to make these work. Yes, those are needed, but that should not be the sole responsibility of DOH, um, uh, going forward. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, David. Appreciate your, uh, um, your support and, and your position. Um, you know, we understand, um, the broad-reaching nature of housing, its impact, um, and I think, uh, as Letitia put it, um, we are all in this together, a- and you, as well, David. Everybody needs to have, uh, put their hand in the middle, um, a- and we need to come up with, uh, combined solutions, um, if we can. So thank you again. Mr. Dunn, again, please reintroduce yourself and, uh, and comment, and you're muted, sir.
John Dunn, Corporation for Supportive Housing, Senior Community Investment Officer. So my, what this looks like to me is that we're substituting federal money for money that the state has already put aside for affordable housing, that there's bond authorization of over $100 million that's currently unused, that the state, you know, has, and so we're gonna use another, almost $40 million of federal money, perhaps so we don't have to use the state money. So I guess my, my comment is, I don't understand why we're not using the resources that we already have for bricks and mortar and creating housing that's really gonna serve homeless people, uh, by virtue of the fact that we're paying for services and operations for that housing. It's not, um, it doesn't need to be a short-term thing. You could pay for operations and services for, uh, 100 units for a long time with $35 million, if they're $40 million. And I really think that that's what a majority of the money should be going for. There's already, there's already bond money available for bricks and mortar for all kinds of housing, uh, for, for all kinds of affordable housing, including affordable housing for homeless people. So this just seems like we're exchanging the use of state funds with federal funds. I doubt that that's the intention of the, uh, of ARP.
Uh, thank you, John. And, um, one, one clarifying piece I'll add to that. Um, money for TBRA or social services is two years. That's the limit under the Home ARP rules. Um, so it would in fact, if we were to use it for those purposes, it's only for, um, a two-year period. The construction dollars or the non-congregate shelter dollars, we actually have a significantly longer period of time to spend it. We don't intend to take it, um, and it is not intended to supplant or replace our state bond dollars. Um, we have intent, um, to spend the vast majority of our bond authorizations, uh, in the next year, um, and these funds really are to do that deep income targeting that is necessary to get to the most vulnerable populations that we can't necessarily get to with our state bond dollars. Um, for those of you who are not familiar with the Loan Com housing tax credit program, um, there's a thing called basis, and it's good money versus bad money. Um, from the loan com housing tax credit standpoint, Home and National Housing Trust Fund, including Home ARP, is good money. It doesn't hurt basis. State bond dollars, in fact, does. Um, it actually, um, has to be loan money, whereas these funds can be input into a project, um, as a grant, have no impact, um, on the development side. Not to say that your points are not well-taken and well-made, John. I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Okay, Michael, sorry, I just have to, the, my understanding of ARP is actually that you could capitalize funds at the time to create, uh, long-term subsidies for services and dollars.
Operating.
Not, not just spending it, uh, month after month for up to two years, but actually capitalizing a big amount that could subsidize a project over, over a period of more like 10 years.
So you are correct, and that's not excluded.
Right.
But that's a development cost? But we don't break it out that way. So we don't talk about it. But yes, John, that's eligible.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Um, any other comments or questions? We will take questions at this point, um, since I think we've run, um, uh, run the course on just general comments about our plan. If you have a question, please, um, raise your hand, we'll do our best to answer it. Um, and Letitia, you're up again.
Mine's a process question. So now you've had this public comment, period, and it's gonna be closing soon. Do the public comments get, um, are they outward-facing? So is there like a document that you post somewhere that says these are the public comments that you received, and this is how they were incorporated in the plan or not?
Yes, that's, that's, and I, I thought I mentioned that a minute ago, uh, if I wasn't clear, I'll, I'll say it again. All comments, all written comments received and any comments from this public meeting are included in the plan when it is submitted to HUD. Those comments are also responded to in the plan. If we made a change, it's identified. If we didn't, there's an explanation. Those are in the final plan. That is a published document, it will be available on the department's website, and all of those materials are submitted to HUD for their review.
Phenomenal. And I just want to say, I'm strongly in support of your plan. My comments are just to bolster the plan, just to be very clear. Okay.
A- a- absolutely. Letitia, I took it no other way, and, and we appreciate, um, everybody's comments, either for, against, or, you know, side conversations, um, as we're talking about, because really we're talking about nuances, um, really not, um, the intent of the plan itself. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Again, any other questions? Um, can someone post a link to the plan? Um, Laura, can you do that? Otherwise, I will. Uh, I will take care of it then. Yeah, give me a minute. I will, uh, I will post a, uh, link to the plan. Uh, the plan is on our website, by the way, um, but I will go there right now, grab it, and post the link in the chat. Oh, look at that. Um, that's not our plan, um, but, uh, there's our plan. Copy, and, let's see if I can do this. Yeah. There it is. So, uh, that is a link to our plan. Um, oh, no, it's not, that's a link to the notice, my apologies. Notice, notice, notice. Where's my plan?
Mike, it's way down. It's just in the notice.
There we go.
Yep.
Yep, thank you. Now it's, now it's in the chat multiple times. So thank you, everyone, for your assistance.
Hi.
Oh.
Sorry.
Please, no, that's okay. Introduce yourself and, uh, a- ask your question or make your comment.
So this is Melissa Cops. I'm an architect, um, with the state of New Haven, and I am an, um, representative of the Connecticut Green Building Council, and I haven't had a chance to review the plan. I just heard about this yesterday, so I'm not sure what is being proposed. Um, but I would like to advocate that it include energy affordability, um, and that it tie itself to, um, the CHFA standards in some way, um, the Connecticut Housing Finance. It's, I don't know, I missed the first part, maybe, or you talked about this.
That's okay, Melissa. I'll, I'll give you the quick and dirty. Um, we, we use the same C, uh, guidelines for construction as CHFA. Um, so energy efficiency is a critical component of all the affordable housing that we finance at the Department of Housing. This plan is targeted, uh, for the specific pot of home ARP funds, um, and it's targeted at the creation of non-congregate shelter and the creation of deep income targeted affordable housing. And yes, energy efficiency is a critical component of everything that we build.
Great. That's, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Questions? Please, raise your hand.
Is there anything in the plan, um, specifically for renovating existing housing to meet, uh, a deep energy retrofit-type standard? Uh, this is Darian Krimmon from Wind Companies.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krimmon. Um, not this, not this particular pot of money. The department does, yes. Um, not the Home ARP money. Home ARP is specifically targeted, um, based on the federal guidelines to create new affordable housing opportunities. Um, we, it, preservation, rehabilitation, um, is not eligible. Um, but we have other opportunities at the department. If you haven't been to our website, look at our program list. Um, we have a process called the Development Engagement Process, um, where we look for, um, activities and energy retrofit, um, energy improvements, um, are, are part of that, uh, part of that list of activities.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So as a final reminder, if you have, if you wish to submit written comments that will be included in our plan and in the submission to HUD and will become part of the public record, please, submit those written comments to ct plans, excuse me, ct.housing-plans@ct.gov. Um, we will be taking those public comments through midnight tomorrow evening, um, but I will tell you that if I came in on Monday morning and there are comments that got posted over the weekend, we'd probably include them as well. Um, but we will absolutely include anything, um, that we get by, uh, the end of the day tomorrow. Okay? Um, any final comments, thoughts, or questions? Please, raise your hand, I'll be happy, um, to take them. All right. Uh, I want to thank everybody for attending. This was a great turnout. Um, I think the, uh, comments we heard were important. Um, the concept of what we intend to do with our plan, we believe, is an important one. We think this is going to be a valuable tool, um, in our fight against homelessness and those at risk of homeless, being homeless. Um, and we appreciate your help and your participation, uh, in making that become a reality. Thank you all again. Please, be safe, um, take care of yourselves and your families, uh, in these difficult times. Um, I am a firm believer, so please, wear your mask, social distance, and take care. Have a great day. Thank you again.